Good evening. It is seven o'clock, so we're going to begin the September 5th meeting of the Tuffington Borough Land and Water. This meeting was continued from August 1st. It is in regards to application for subdivision on tax map 40-2-1 Winchester CR and Hampshire and Angeles. Before we begin, we're going to go through a little bit of housekeeping, which is always important. First thing to be aware of is that the emergency exits are located in the corners of the room, as far as directly behind you. And even more important than that, the restrooms are straight through that door to the left there is the ladies' room as well as the bedroom. We're going to do a little more housekeeping and we are going to just go through the minutes from our last meeting to see if the board have any changes to amendments they've made. On page three, on the top of the page, Eric would like to change it to keynote it Horizon's engineering and he would like to add North Point as well, engineering. Bill Markison would like to change on page three, he would like to change the originally as written that North Point Engineering prepared their libraries plans when in fact they did not. And that is in the top of the page. Before we get going, I hope you indulge me, we did this in the first meeting, but I see a lot of new faces and so I always think it's worthwhile explaining exactly what we're doing here and how this will work so that no one's wondering. The planning board's role is to write zoning and then review zoning for changes in use or subdivisions or boundary line adjustments. We do not deal in, we do not have the authority to change zoning, that rests with the power only with the zoning order of appeals. So our job is to look at uses that are permitted under the zoning as they're written and to interpret the laws, the zoning rules, etc. so forth, to make sure they're applied correctly, evenly and fairly. And that is what we are going to continue to be tonight. Before we get going, I would like to remind everyone that this is obviously a contested hot issue, but that when this is over, we will all be friends and neighbors again. And so I ask everyone to show respect to people around you by speaking calmly. Also be conscious, if you would like to speak, to state your name and also to state your address. And everyone will be allowed to speak, so I would ask that you allow, if you're part of this meeting, everyone else to speak before you can speak again. And I would also remind everyone that if you have previously spoken about an issue that is in the public record in the minutes, so just because we're having another meeting, we don't necessarily need to go through that one more time. So if you have some new information, I would consider that a right order versus information that we can give. That being said, it's everyone's right to speak about whatever they would like. Yes. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
One second.
All those in favor? Before we get going, does anyone have any questions about general planning board procedures or about how this will go, not about the application itself, but just purely by procedure matters? Okay. Before we get going, we do need to go over one more thing. In the meeting from August 1st, a gentleman brought up a point that he felt that two members were more conflicted. And whenever that happens, it's something that we need to talk about and we need to make sure that that is not the case because fairness is the most important thing. So we have talked with council about it and received their input and been very forthright with them. For any of you who do not know, I work in the low business, I have some marinas on Lake Hurstaki, so the gentleman believed that because I would potentially be renting a dog to somebody that would be on an island and I might be conflicted. I do not feel that I am. I, you know, there's a potential someday somebody may rent something from me, but that could be true of any tradesman or anybody in town. So I would like, I have no financial interest in this application, I have nothing to gain. But I would like to have a vote from the board, an advisory board vote, to see if anyone feels that I am conflicted. And could I have somebody to make their motion?
We have a vote to, if anyone there.
We have a second.
I'll say it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
With that, could we have a vote, a yea or nay or a vote against?
Aye.
Second one please.
Five of them.
Yep, continue down. The same.
The second comment made was that, my name is Tony Trillo, and I was conflicted because I was affiliated with the same real estate company that the applicant's agent is. State of New Hampshire says that we are all independent contractors. I'm affiliated with Maxwell Real Estate. I do not feel that this has a personal or financial gain in the outcome of this decision. And I feel as if I will not accuse myself, but I ask for the advisory vote, vote by the board to affirm.
Can I have a motion? And a second?
Second.
We'll start from this side, this one. I confirm, not conflicted. All right, make sure those are entered into the minutes. With that, we have some revised plans that have been presented based on, I assume, what that has been presented by members of the public as regards this subdivision. So with that, I'm going to ask the applicant.
So at the July meeting, there was a lot of discussion about the plans. Since then, we've gone back and revised the plans. We're now down to ten lots and I'd like to go through all the different changes that happened on the plans. First off is the area, there was a discussion about conflicting with the plan that was recorded by the set survey. The reported plan from the set survey stated the area was 13.3. That was still the aerial photography. We've done more detailed survey of the property and now it is different than we first presented, it was 13.58, which was a water example, went out and located the edge better and the area now is 13.4, slight difference. There is an un- and submitted one error on sheet 205, it just still says 13.58, I should say 13.4. And on the lot count, like I said, we went down from 12 lots to 10 lots on a couple factors, lot size and the applicant's desire for the layout of the lots in the reference line, which was more accurately delineated over the plans. The lots range from 28,000 up to 91,000. The 91,000 square foot lot is the lot that contains the existing site that's on the There's three lots that are under 53,000 because of the smokes, they can be down to 48,000. And then the remainder are well over, close to well over 53,000 square feet. On the frontages, everything got adjusted, so the frontages range from 150 on two lots and then up to 423 feet on one of the lots. One of the comments from the last meeting was that one of the tie lines is less than 150 feet. There is still one on here less than 150 feet, but the frontage on the lake is 150 feet and then the lot spreads out and the wells contained on the lot. There was a lot of noise and discussion about easements. We did further research on easements. It's shown there's an existing easement for New England, New Hampshire, electric lot gives me white mountain power, it's a 10-foot easement along the power lines that exist, or the power poles that exist on the site. In addition to that, we expanded that easement for the proposed conditions to add another easement along Propeline going north, so that there's an easement where you can get power in every single lot. There was discussion about test pits and data in those test pits, those have all been updated, per test have been added. And then there was a big, there was quite a bit of discussion about the shoreline and the elevations that we used. There's two different dams and there's two different dams with diglands out there, the FEMA maps are at 88 dam and a lot of other stuff that's a 29 dam. So what we did, we used the 88 dam and showed up and answered the references between the Showing that the correct reference line is the 88 dam, but also that's corresponding to 20 other dams as well. There was discussion about the TBMs, those have been all registered on the site. And then there was a discussion about floodplain elevation. The floodplain elevation for Lake Hurstaki is 506. The elevation for the full lake elevation is 503 E2E. So every lot that's on Lake Hurstaki has some form of floodplain on it. This is a very abrupt shoreline because there is now on plan showing 506 on toward, which still indicates a floodplain. On the very front of every lot, there's a little bit because they own, everybody owns down to 503 E2. The electric system was the topic of discussion. Since then, Lake Hurstaki co-op has done out, tested the line, visually checked the line and submitted a letter to the board saying that it's in working condition. Also says, the last thing we provided before the last meeting before, July meeting, Fish Bank went out, did a site, didn't find any nesting from the booms or eagles as well as the natural, Eric's bureau letter came back with no impacts. And just to talk about what's left for approvals with the board, DES, the only other approval for that subdivision that this time would be subdivision approval from DES, the shoreline permit, any other impacts that may happen with the lot development would come after the fact. If there's already impact within 250 feet of the reference on any dock installation, septic installation, development of many of the lots will require DES permits. And in the state supplement, the rule typically takes 30 to 60 days. They ask 30 days, so if you really advocate, you get comments back and you usually address it right off. And one or the other, just to kind of wrap it up, was the 65-day lot. The applicant has no problem with granting that waiver immediately, writing, let's know and they can draft something up tonight. I think that brings it up to make.
We were waiting for the 65-day waiver, looking at what's in front of us, and if you begin this, we'll send it right now. Part of what we talked about in the last meeting was the need for a department review, which the applicant has agreed to. Following that meeting, we did receive information from firms that would be available to do that. And Gary actually did quite a bit of research on choosing them and it's narrowed it down to a couple. But I'm going to have Gary just talk about what he did in order to make sure he found a company that was capable of doing this.
My name is Gareth Flack. For those of you that don't know me, can you hear me okay, better than that? Okay. What we did is, we go to White House survey for, but obviously there's a little conflict with that since he's working for Campell now during this process. We went to another company that we use, Norway Plains. Norway Plains declined to deal with us because there's so many customers and it's unable to. So we decided to work elsewhere to deal with it. So we, 100% in myself, found seven engineering companies within the state. So I started to research those seven. Three out of those seven declined to go further with because they don't do municipal planning boards, they do private, they go to the public, okay, rather than the government. All right, and those are clearly large firms, so. So I came up with requirements for the boundary source guys that I thought that met it, and I'll read a little letter that those particular people would have gotten from me representing the planning board. From the Town of Tuffington Borough, Planning Board, 240 Middle Road, the subject requirements for a complete review of One Farm Island proposed subdivision plan. The Town of Tuffington Borough in Hampshire seeks a multi-disciplined and Hampshire licensed civil engineering surveying company, which works for municipal planning boards with review of site plans and development for conformance and zoning ordinance, town regulations and state standards. The Town of Tuffington Borough will require a complete plan review and studying regulatory review for application of CH Relic Trust, Randy Owen, Cynthia Pratt and owned by David Goff and John Winchester, tax map 40, lot 2-1, One Farm Island, Tuffington Borough, Hampshire, Carroll County. The following Tuffington Borough and Hampshire planning board are required. First of all, you need to be civil engineering licensed in the state of New Hampshire. You need to be a land surveyor licensed in the state of New Hampshire. You need to have separate designer, subsurface disposal system licensed in the state of New Hampshire. Experienced doing feasibility studies, which is wetlands and soil science, site plan review, shoreline permitting with complete knowledge of environmental services, DES New Hampshire, regulatory and environmental services, extensive knowledge of the New Hampshire Shoreland Water Quality Protection Act. And last, a complete understanding of the Town of Tuffington Borough zoning ordinance, subdivision regulations and site plans. For those who do not see these, these are what these are. These are the regulations, okay, vote by the town, okay, people of the town. The Tuffington Borough Planning Board will include a proposed subdivision plan with David Goff and John Winchester, engineered by New Hampshire Land Consultants, Northwood, New Hampshire, and all associated documents pertaining to this plan. Also included will be a complete set of public letters and documents pertaining to proposed farm island subdivision. These are but not limited to: New Hampshire National Heritage Bureau dated July 16, 2019; New Hampshire Land Cooperative Gmail dated July 31, 2019; and August 1, 2019; New Hampshire Fisher Game dated July 26; Lake Hurstaki Association dated July 17; White House Survey and Engineering Company dated July 8; South Castle Farm Island Talking Points dated July 18; Stony Ridge Environmental LLC dated July 11; Francis W. Allen, LSE Agenda Item 3 dated 1718. Not only will they get that, they'll get every public letter that came to us, that was emailed to us, brought to us personally. So the entire file will go to these people for review, okay? So what we did is, the seven people that we looked at, so I said, three of those we tossed out because we didn't do municipal, all right? We came down to four other people. The boys in camp, Horizon's Engineering, Joneson Beach, the North Port Engineering. The boys in camp got a letter, okay, as well as the other three, two of the other three. They looked at it and went through questions over a week period of time, they came back and they decided to decline to deal with it. They felt that they didn't meet all the parameters of what I just raised here, okay? And which they did not, they would sub it out, they declined to do it. They felt that they are very busy at this time and they probably wouldn't get it at the time we need to have it done. All right, we went to Joneson Beach. Joneson Beach came back to me and noted that they stopped doing municipal planning reviews and feeling only public type items at this point. So talked to Horizon Engineering, Horizon got a letter, North Port Engineering got a letter, and they both decided to do proposals for us. So those proposals came in, they've been given to the board now and a little bit of our Horizon, so they're both in New Hampshire, they employ 40 different people, they're a fairly well-established company. North Port Engineering is a smaller firm, about eight people. They've done work for Tuffington Borough in the past in the library and I don't believe Horizon's has done anything for Tuffington Borough, but they're well-known in the area. So at that point, everybody here has some proposals to deal with. And this boy needs to vote on who they want to use. So I think with that, Matt, is a vote now?
If I may point out, I am on the East Horizon, but I'm working in a project with Horizon on Carroll.
All right. You feel that's a problem with you?
I don't.
Who are the members of the board here between the two of us?
Horizon's, they're a whole lot, they have key sources.
I've worked with Horizons on some projects, permitting and heavier permitting, because on the other end, they work with superb to deal with them. They also have some extensive experience with municipal wastewater systems, RID systems. They've always been under budgeted, so they would be like, nothing against North Point was, just based on my experience.
Well, when I looked at the proposal, I think that both the companies, Horizon's proposal was much more detailed, much more depth, broke out the dollars, broke out the ticket rate for the board on the plan, gave us a lot of different options. North Point's was a dollar amount, there was no indication of what it would cost. And not that they are good people, I think they are good people, but I think the complexity of this and what I've seen of what I've read, Horizon's, they're better sourced across and I vote for Horizon.
If I'm not mistaken, Horizon's has all the disciplines necessary and house, correct?
They had all the disciplines. North Point was missing one discipline, they are not a land surveyor, okay? And they talk to the nice, they use an outside source, so they sub it out. Horizon's doesn't sub anything out, really, it's pre-ruled, everything is done. So they met all the disciplines, yes.
Can I have a motion to approve Horizon's engineering as the third-party engineer of this application? So, all those in favor, aye. With this, I would like to see a public case.
If I can say a.
Absolutely.
I just want to bring to the board what we already have established.
Could you undo it yourself?
Yeah, there's attorney Andy Solomon of Metro New Hampshire on behalf of the admin. So there's no AOT permit, it's not required, it's not listed there. Scott already mentioned National Historic Preservation, I mean, National Historic Area report of July 16, no record of becomes a sensitive species. The National Historic Preservation Act, Section 6106, it's not a federal funded project. Shoreline Protection Act will be here too as the time is appropriate for the build purpose et cetera, in question. Loom preservation, collateral Loom Preservation Committee indicated July 16, no loom nesting, indicated it was a potential, but there's no loom nesting. Wetlands that was addressed earlier, with TS Departmental Consultant, the wetlands of the map, and that consultant report, 727, indicate no endangered species of plants that are, we've already addressed, electric easement and this is an operational condition in the Army Corps, which is not required. I mentioned all this because last time, there were various oversights that were asked to be looked into, which was one of the some totally unnecessary. There's a question last time about perhaps determining regional impact. I looked at the criteria for regional impact on back to plan. The first one says, does the proposed residential subdivision increase more than 25% of the number of dwellings within the town? The town stock is approximately 2,200 dwellings, half of which are full-time, the rest is half are seasonal. We're proposing 10, doesn't it come close to 25%? And then also paging two of the master plan, it mentions the district we're in here, the ISC, out of observation, the master plan says the zone basically provides for protection block holes in wildlife habitat and appropriate land use of the island. So if we look at all these things, I don't know if it's any regional impact, or if you're going to determine that or not. And make this one observation, it's not only in your purview per se, but I want to be in the context of what's happening here. We all know the camp has expressed its concerns, but the camp also wants to buy the property. It's made the offer to Winchester, which is potentially higher than what White House has, okay? And so they're running against the same clock in the times of the Essex, just want to mention it. Can't hurry things along, can't hurry government along. There's a lot of stuff going on here that you wouldn't normally see, it's behind the scenes, but it is prevalent, it is impacting the pipeline and, you know, persons complain about all the noise and rags, craters and rags, individuals that don't want this, they want to buy themselves. And it's all going against the clock with the original PNS contract, so a lot going on here. And I would ask that you just appreciate the time you give all, getting that third-party review done as fast as possible, because that makes an impacting, wrong decision. Thank you. I did, before you step down, I did have a quick question in regards to power, after reading the letter. I think there's some issues that need to be resolved with the island needs now. Anytime there's high voltage with water, it's always a matter of concern. And I do realize I do listen very regularly. Sure. Who owns the water?
I believe that's the power company, it was a question.
Yeah.
Do you receive the letter?
We did, it was, you know, apparently vague. It was something to answer, not for you. Who would fix it if it broke? And my other question is, who would be liable if someone got hurt by the water?
They own the line, they put the line in. I think their liability has some problems. Much their liability, other problems, but it is the same line, the same spec, but newer than what is by $140 on Big Bear, significantly shorter, and new. So if you do $140, you do that span of Big Bear.
I absolutely don't doubt that. My, my concern is, 10 years down the line, when, you know, somebody says someone has purchased these lots, and the line has failed, and they find out that, you know...
We confirm that, but my experience with it quite many is that, they get the abatement, they own the line, they own the obligation to maintain, they're the one providing the power to get any utility covered.
I would just want to see that spelled out very clearly, and I would also want to know where the responsibility of New Hampshire Electric starts and where it ends. And then, on the island itself, we probably want maintenance agreement for the, any line beyond...
I can write it up right now. I, I'm, yeah, I'm Randy Owen, and I'm the project. With the Duane Coa, they will own the line, I'll get to the bit of writing. And they indicated if we went arid on the island, that I will own the land, the lines on the island. But if I went direct burial and used the vaults and transformed in vaults, so there's no lines, nothing exposed, they would even own that. So that will be owned by me, or Cindy, that will, I call this, I'll get that right.
Thank you.
I was talking to Randy earlier, you just tell me, tell me about the department, sorry.
Sorry. I, you know, for, for what it's worth, to clarify, my parents bought on Cow Island in 1959. And some people call me developer, inexperienced developer. I'm an islander. I've been on the island since 1959. My parents bought in 59. Cindy's parents bought when she was 10. Were islanders, Cow Island. We know how to go off on the island, we go off in that island. Two to three years ago, the only parking we had was parking lot that we have to get to stick. This year, or like last year, they opened up the side of the road, I don't know if they opened it up, but they just figured out it was available. But the side of the road is available, it can be a problem, another 10, 20 cars on the side of the road. It's not even necessary, but for what it was this year, the parking lot itself is beating the nail. So we've had a long discussion on parking, but this has been the easiest year ever to park a car here in 19. Side of the road opened up, gas station, you know, the store is not running, and I know some of the owners of the slips in here in 19 must be using additional parking. The parking is easier than it's ever been. I used to own a slip in here in 19, I know the luxury of that too, but now, the parking is much easier. Thank you.
Question from the survey area, actually it's just, partially from my own knowledge. I've always heard that the high watermark of Lake Winnipesaukee is 504.32, and you were mentioning 503.82.
Right. So there's two data, you go by 88 to 29, there's another one, 22, that's, that's wrong. So, the data for 29 is 504.32. The flood plain is under 88. The data we had was under 88, so what we did is we adjusted the full lake elevation to the 88 data, and noted it on the plan, so that's, it's relative to everything. Everything is relative to each other, so there's not a mixture of 88 data and 29 data. So if everything goes in the 29 data, that would be at 504.32. The flood plain would be at 506.5. Everything would be adjusted up.
Thank you.
Scott? Excuse me, Scott, I have a couple. Survey, I did a, or we did, what they had, I have a couple. Now speaking? Excuse me, first speaking. And it was, they talked about the depiction of the lake level, or the pit, 24 feet. Is that, no, I just want to clarify, you've corrected that now?
Yes.
Okay. So, there was a false statement, subject parcel located in Zone X according to Whitecomb Survey, and not within 100 F lots of them. You corrected that?
Right, but I can explain it.
No, but that was done right, okay. It was noted that the planning board should require an accurate mapping of the 504.56, recommended by Whitecomb, so that's, we're just discussing that.
Yeah, that's, that's...
So, there was another question here about Group 3 soil types, not in test pits, using 8% slope. Lots 2.3 through 2.9, 2.12 and 2.13 are less than minimum requirements. And they had, you could bring it up to 53 tons of squiffy. Now, you've changed a lot of sizes, some still at 48,000 in squiffy, we get to the 53. And, is that because of this statement, basically?
It's, you...
What was the issue?
It's a slope, slope is not defined, so generally it's up to 48,000 and then maybe 15,000.
Okay. And of course, one lot you quickly get to 150 feet, that lot's gone, or now it's banned totally.
Right, the comment that was made was about the tie line, and there's still a tie line on there that's 147.4 something, but the frontage on, on the reference line is 150 feet.
Okay.
And that's, that's the cottage lot, which is building that, 150.
All right, lovely answer. And, Stony Ridge Environmental had questioned, the soil test pits recorded for the application, particular test pit for 5, 6, 7, 8, I'll go back to, excuse me, 12. They were designated Hamburger Foster, and, so the soil test pit cannot be two different , these soil types. And second, the test pits recorded by the Hamburger Land Consultant show shallow water at 30 inches. How did you address that?
Well, what was on the test pits, which isn't required by D E S, we took the soil type off the test pits. What we put on it was the N R C S soil type, sometimes it's a conflict. So we took that off the test pits, and it still shows it as the N R C S soil type, so that's what I'm talking about.
All right. So that's something that Horizon's been definitely got. And the only other question I have is, lot 2. Lot 2 is this corner lot, this larger lot right here.
Yep.
Here, you have, you have the subject that says it's a draw on that lot. Am I correct?
I am.
I don't see it right there, I look at the plan here.
The 4K area, so we're in the test pits, we're testing it.
Okay, so you show it forward here. I'm curious, why are you getting further back?
Well, when we originally went out and did test pits, as you know, it's a task to get a estimator up there. When we went out and did the original test pits, we had the other layout. So we're showing the 4K area over that. And when, when the lots develop, technically, there's going to be new test pits down closer to wherever they're going to do the house. And these are all potential areas that can prove that the areas, they're satisfied.
So are you saying that when somebody goes to build it, they can actually prove on that and go further back?
Yeah.
That's, okay. So the people know that, that's seen that. Because generally, I think that the state would prefer to see about that, as long as you meet the radius, so my so forth, they need the house before.
Right.
The other thing they showed, the 250-foot setback for the Suluang Water Quality Protection Act, okay? I notice you bring it across here, but, does the 2, I, I want to get clarification this, I don't know myself, but the 250 is from the front of that lot, but yet, you still have shorefront here. So your line comes down like this, and it comes across, or it just stops here. Wouldn't this line actually have to go like this and meet the 250 rule this way?
I can play, this is a back shot, shoreline, so shoreline, and it comes out more down here.
Okay, we know it, yeah. All right, I'm on set, I appreciate it, thank you.
Yep.
Does anyone on the board have any other questions? With that, the public session is still open to the last meeting, so if anyone has any questions about this meeting, please remember to speak your name as well as your address. Yes, I'm ready.
Hi, yes, my name is Karen Stein, I'm from Gable Lake, and I just want to speak in regards to the volunteers who've spent countless hours to monitor the 19 Mile Bay and Lake Winnipesaukee as a whole in an attempt to make water quality protection a high priority. I also want to make the comment that they've been doing this work long before the subdivision application went in for Farm Island, but I want people to realize the programs and organizations that the volunteers work for, with who they work for. I'm sure, I'm getting so nervous. One of them is the Lakes Lake Monitor Program, collecting water samples to, for lake water quality data. Another one is Lake Winnipesaukee Association, and they do loom watch tracking, sign of bacteria blooms, and the phosphorus levels when the ice is out, and also the Montmoreau Bay and when a harbor watershed, which is ongoing, but it includes 19 Mile Bay. And then there's the New Hampshire Lakes Association, which provides levels program, which if people go down to 19 Mile Bay docks that hear 19, they'll see someone who inspects the boats, trailers, and gear for invasive plants and animals. Then there's the Lakes Region Conservation Courts, and the New Hampshire Department and Farm Island Service, which are weed watchers, and they do milk oil, marder removal of invasive species. So I just want people to realize that you can see there's a concern for the 19 Mile Bay water quality, it's not new to Tuffin Grove residents, property owners, guests, and volunteers, and I'm hoping, and I, and please consider the impact of this development to water quality in 19 Mile Bay, and require a third-party environmental review in regards to the water. And thank you to all the volunteers.
Thank you.
Frank Arger-Singer, and I'm informed, knowing that Chase Point wrote, there was mentioned that there is no new loom nesting currently on Farm Island. Looms don't always nest in the same location every year. So the fact that there's no loom nesting right now, or hasn't been in the last couple years, doesn't mean that Farm Island doesn't represent a significant part of places for looms to nest. And, I can speak, I think, on behalf of residents of Chase Point, that we don't get looms nesting on our shorefront, because they're inhabited, and there's a lot of activity going on, whereas Farm Island currently is still a very viable place for looms to nest.
So I had the opportunity, and I thought it was wise to walk the entire island, both the Elmap side and the proposed side with fishing and biologists. And I never really gave a lot of thought to where looms nest, or what they require for nesting. But apparently, looms can't walk very well, which was news to me. But, in walking the entire area of the island, the biologist came in, was there are only two locations that are suitable for loom nesting on the island. And by suitable, I mean in one case, one location is about an 18-inch wide, which is a gap, and some boulders that goes to some marsh area on the back. So, it was very interesting, and the one location is that cove right there, there's a large boulder by the cove, and behind that boulder was one of the only access points, you know, where a limited access in and out of the water, which actually looks like it's situated fairly far away from some housing, proposed to me. But, if I had one recommendation, and maybe we're looking at potentially, you know, taking that area right there, putting in, off of restriction, just on that, once more. Absolutely.
So with the, with the reports of the Fish and Game and those couple other reports that came in, that area, we have noted it on the plan as a potential loom nesting area, and added a note to the plan stating the contractor, and this will be carried on to shoreline lands and whatever else is intended, that there is a new nesting area between those two lots to take extra precaution there. And there is a wetland that surrounds that area from water, so I don't, I don't, I hate everybody, I think they stay near the water, that wetland, and that wetland setback is 50 feet, so, right out the back, at least 50 feet to that wetland, and then whatever that, that wetland has to spare us.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak? Yes, sir.
Good evening, I'm William Lassie, and my home record is 5 Bay Road, right on 19 Mile Bay. Members of the board and residents of Tuffin Grove, thanks for having me and talking tonight. I'd like to continue the discussion about the environment, and I understand that due diligence has been for the island itself, but I'd like to discuss the watershed, its greater impact and the waters surrounding, excuse me, the whole subdivision. After consulting an old biologist in the state, and he stated, and I'm reading, summarizing his email back to, back to us, through, through the subdivision review process, the planning board, yourselves have the authority to require a third-party review of sensitive applications in what you've done, and I appreciate it. If the water quality protection and wildlife habitat actually desire, a third-party environmental consultant who can inventory the natural resources in a parcel, also ask the questions of what resources are available, can be helpful for the insight and information needed to make it for you to make an informed decision. Review of the stormwater management measures by the third-party engineers also highly recommended in sensitive areas, and I hope that'll be included in your third-party review. If any stormwater management measures are proposed, through, thoughts should be given to how those measures will be maintained over time to ensure proper function. Concerning that, maybe, considerations may be given to those who can keep record of many inspections that are required as part of the operation of a major plant, and how state or local municipality will assure compliance, I G, what would be funding to support future on-site inspections. I'd also like to submit tonight some, some information gathered about the shoreline protection efforts in the watershed, as well as Montmoreau Bay watershed restoration plan for, for the record. Absolutely, appreciate it, thank you.
Anyone else want to speak?
My name is Frank, last year I lived in 5 Bay Road, next to the town beach. I gotta try and straighten out some thinking about wildlife in that area. I'll have to agree that the looms did not nest there this year, due to whatever factors there are. Whole Montmoreau Bay produced only four chicks this year. And, the reasons being for no production out of the area on Farm Island is perhaps high water or boat traffic close to where they usually do nest. There are lots of boats out there that are moored during their nestings. They're still there now, but they're beyond nesting. Last year, they nested and produced one chick, and what trouble is, the eagle did it. So don't tell me there are no eagles up there. And the year before, there was a twin of one up there, and eagles got one of them. So, it's productive area, and this just happens to be a down year for the loom nesting So it's productive area, and this just happens to be a down year for the loom nesting population success, as I understand it from the loom people up in Molten Grove.
Anyone else want to speak?
This is John Puli, and I work in Molten Grove, the preservation committee. So it's like a good chance to follow up with a little bit more information. And I want, I want to thank you for the chance to speak. And also, just to summarize briefly a few of the points that were in the letter that we submitted and applied to the planning board, hopefully to provide information for everybody to work with in the planning process. And also in touch with the national commission meeting as they develop their survey. So summarize, LBC has been working with volunteers and our staff to track loom activity in Ninety Mile Bay since the nineteen seventies, that's the kind of monitoring we do around the state. And over that time, the Ninety Mile Bay loom territory has been one of the most productive territories on Lakewood of Saki. When I looked that up, it was in the top five of the thirty-nine eight monitoring territories that we track in terms of the number of loom chicks. So historically, it has been a successful breeding area for looms. And in general, New Hampshire, we find that loom productivity and even the presence of looms on a lake is negatively associated with human shoreline development and land use. So if you look across the board at our data over those forty years, a busier lake tends to be lake where it's harder for looms to remain viable. And that's intuitive to us, and it's the basis for our general concern in terms of shoreline development. Specifically here in Ninety Mile Bay and in terms of Farm Island. As people have mentioned, both our surveys from LBC and fishing game identified these couple areas, but on the east northeast side of the island, it has good potential for nesting habitat. The first time I saw them was when I was looking for a nest that we hadn't been able to locate when the looms were nesting. We just noticed the chicks, and that was one of the first places I looked for them. Because it looks from distance and almost like, like the potential loom nesting habitat. So the point here, our specific concern is that, given the limited remaining undeveloped shoreline on Lakewood of Saki and in Tuftboro, we, that elevated our concern about the prospect of the island being developed. And the setbacks noted in the revised plan are encouraging to me in terms of, of the underlined concern, but I, they may not necessarily address the management issue that we'd be dealing with if the island has ten houses on it and docks, presumably. And we're working on figuring out how to strike that balance between a loom nest on the shoreline and the human use of those plots as residents, as it looks to be on water. Lastly, a specific concern this site that's based on our current observations, not just on the potential for nesting, is that the cove and shoreline on the east side of the island and between Farm and Chase Islands and the mainland is a consistent rooting area at this point for the territorial pair when they do hatch young. And undeveloped shoreline on the island and the rooting area increases the chance that they can focus on feeding and rearing when they're young. So that, again, is what brings me here tonight, is that as we manage loom nesting on Lakewood of Saki and the rooting areas on Lakewood of Saki, we're always relieved to have a section of shoreline that's undeveloped where the looms are on the shore. This has been a positive year on Lakewood of Saki in terms of nesting success. So Fran mentioned four chicks on Molten Grove Bay. That made that company were initially hatched by the middle of August. We only had three loom chicks on the entire lake, on all of Lakewood of Saki. That's how many survived in mid-August. And we're, it's not the end of the world, we're used to occasional bad years. But the lake as a whole relies on the standout territories like Ninety Mile Bay. With that long history of contributing successful nesting efforts to sustain the population. In some years, the chicks have rooted along that backside of Farm Island. Maybe really carrying the torch for the whole lake. And again, it's heightened our focus on individual cases where, you know, there's, there may be some concern between the land and shoreline development and a sensitive breeding area like that. So, you know, I want to say again, thank you for considering looms and reviewing this proposal. I understand that your focus and restrictions is the zoning itself. And encourage all, everybody involved to consider, to consider possible modifications, which include things like the increased setbacks or reduced number of lots or as the permitting process would go forward, for waterfront access like docks, to consider designating a limited number of access points that would keep the most of that shoreline available as an uncertain habitat for both asking for it.
Next, sir. How is the loom population?
The loom population in New Hampshire as a whole is very gradual, it's slowly making its way back from the state was in the nineteen seventies when it looked like it might, looms might be exiting the state. So we're now, I don't know, we've more than tripled the number of looms in the state since then. And when we started in nineteen seventy-five, that work, we interviewed old timers on Lakewood of Saki, find out how many looms there used to be on the lake. And as far as their estimates go and what we've been able to infer, we're probably a little better than halfway towards a completely recovered population that would be at carrying capacity. So we're sort of midway, and it's a work in progress. And we're gradually and slowly headed in the right direction with a lot of intensive management that has started over the years.
I'm sorry, what is that number?
The number of...
Population?
So this year, we counted approximately three hundred and fourteen reeferers of looms throughout the state.
And chicks?
And we ended up with approximately a hundred and forty loom chicks surviving to mid-August, three of them on Lakewood of Saki. I'm saying approximately because we're, you know, just finishing up the data, making sure we got our eyes on that.
How many chicks are aboard on natural shoreline persons on the floating platforms?
We see typically in recent years, about a quarter of the loom chicks hatched in New Hampshire coming from the nest racks. And that's quite slightly higher on lakes like Lakewood of Saki where there's proportionally more nest racks.
How many chicks on squam link this year?
On a big squam link, there were four surviving chicks.
How about last year?
And last year, it was less than, it was, well, it's about that. And I'm blanking right now on the exact number, but, you know, that's about what it's been this year.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak?
You mentioned the two loom nesting areas of the block.
Correct.
Where were you?
On the Elmapp side.
And what kind of activity, what kind of activity did you know, know near and around that loom nesting area?
The activity level was heavy.
And what was that activity level?
It was heavy, it was by their canoe landing for accessing them.
Yeah, exactly what they will do with the entire island.
Anyone else want to speak? Yes, sir.
My name is Frank Moore, with the five Greenwood Road, Ninety Mile Bay. Something tells me that if there was this many concerned residents some number of years ago, there wouldn't be a gas stock at Ninety Mile Bay. You probably would have gotten voted down. I understand, and my information could be wrong, but I was told that the Camp Elm app has a backup offer on this property. I also believe that there's a signed PNS with a gentleman who wants to buy it at this current time. I would assume that there is an expiration date on this PNS agreement. If that's the case, and there are so many people that are concerned, why not just let the PNS run out, let Camp Elm app buy it, and everybody gets all the winner?
Anyone else want to speak? Yes, sir.
I'm Sue Orr, also five Greenwood Grove. I just would like a little bit more explanation on the parking. This gentleman has said that this year has been the easiest to park down by Ninety Mile Bay. I have to dispute that. We've never ever had the amount of trucks, we've trailers on both sides. And I'm not sure if Mr. Johnson is here this evening. There was a joust in the boat last time that almost hit a young child. The Ninety Mile Beach has become much more active, which is a great thing, it does what the town wants. And now you have all these trucks and trailers on both sides, you don't know if it's leaving or not. Is there a tagging process? How can, so if we have ten more houses and they're going to be allowed to park there also, when's it gonna stop? Are they gonna go both ways, you know, up the hill and down further? Just, just a question that I'd like a little bit more clarification on, that there's so much easy parking this year.
Before we get to that, I just want to respond to the gentleman's question about delaying until the purchases runs out. The planning board treats every applicant the same and intends to do the same with this applicant. And we would move over at the speed with due diligence as we always would. Questioning your parking, I think it's a very good point. And after the first meeting, I was fairly curious because there was a lot of questions about safety and cars being parked on the side of the road. So that meeting was on a Thursday, and that Saturday was ninety-five degrees, a beautiful sunny day. And I decided that I would take a drive down Pier Nineteen to see what the situation was and what was going on. Because it's a fairly simple thing to do, and I think it cleared up a lot of questions to my mind. So as I drove up, I could see that there were cars parked down the side of the road, on both sides of the road, probably somewhere around a dozen of them were trailers. So that's kind of alarming because a kid could get hit, someone could step out of their car and get hit. And obviously, that's one of the things we're looking at. So I continued up the road, and I drove to the parking, which is the town parking. And what I found was that the parking lot was virtually empty. That what was happening was that people were parking on the side of the road because it's a shorter walk to the launch ramp. And people generally go by the path of least resistance. So it didn't look like there was a lack of parking for the existing trailers. It looked sufficient, but I believe what we have there is an actual enforcement issue as far as enforcing that they use in parking, like that's provided by the town for boat trailers and boat launch and things like that. So...
Yeah, we're concerned about the, the traffic because if they are blocked. And Pier Nineteen store might be open. We don't, we don't know. So that is all that traffic. And I think when the store, you know, it's been closed a few years before, people just tended to slow down into that area because of all the traffic from the docks.
Yes.
It's just a total safety issue.
Yes, I agree, it's much more dangerous than it seems.
Thank you. Thank you.
You hit the nail on the head, there may be enforcement issues, but it's out of the control of the applicants or something in town. And other people, other than I will people parked there, could be another part of town, other towns coming up. It's clearly not the business of testing the potential tenant homes there, it's from all over. And again, if there is out of the market, out on the town, whatever the town can do, what they can do is within their purview, they get open to the market.
Anyone else want to speak? Yes?
Morgan Forbes from Curry Lane. The other thing about the parking, as we look, we were just down the lake, getting dragged by here, is the amount of crash left behind on the side of the road. That's magnified since the last couple of years when the no parking signs disappeared. Because there were no parking signs there for the longest time. And I can, then also the fence near the public beach changed. And I think that's about when they disappeared. And then, you know, sometimes they're parked all the way up, there is a visibility issue sometimes in coming out of the road coming from the beach because of those trailers. So I think whether it's the state that needs to get involved in this, get into parking, but that aside from everything, that is an issue.
I agree, I mean, the parking, to me, seems unsafe on the side of the road. But again, I did have the existence of enforcement issue, and not a lack of parking issue as far as the... From what I saw, and just to kind of be able to measure it, I took, as far as the usage of the launch ramp and such, so I took the utilization rates for the valet and several arenas in the area, because I knew them well enough to call them, and I know what their peak utilization rates are. And it was one of the highest utilization rates for that, for the summer. Meaning that it was probably a peak traffic load or a close to peak traffic load as far as the side of the roads and trailers and such. So again, there is a problem there, but, I mean, to my common sense eyes, it appeared to be that there's enforcement issue and not a, you know, law intent. Does anyone else have any questions? Yes?
Barry Anderson, Joey wrote, I'm a little concerned about the parking. And that, like you, I took a ride by there on Saturday, Labor Day weekend, eleven o'clock, beautiful sunny day. Parking lot was empty. So as far as parking being a problem, the other thing is, there's gonna be ten houses built up there. You know, ten people that buy those houses, they're probably already here, and they probably already have boats here. So there's not gonna be an increase necessarily in boats because they're most likely here already. And the other thing is, all these people that live around the lake complain about the boat traffic, parking, and this and that. How many of you have just one boat, not multiple? I bet most of you have many boats, and that's part of the problem here too. So you gotta let, if you have another ten boats...
Gonna make a difference?
No. They may already be here, and you've got about four hundred and fifty lots on three islands in Tuftboro. So another ten, gonna make a difference? No.
Would anyone else want to speak? Yes?
Good evening, this is Amber Mel, Divine Woman, represent Camp Elm app. I'm listening to the dialogue here, which is great, and appreciate your time. This application, like every application, should be treated the same. And traffic study is a standard requirement in the subdivision. So I don't see anything unusual in requiring and having a traffic study done. Clearly, there's some issues. I think one word that could make a difference at what point is the tipping point. It is unusual, we've done some research at the firm about parking for an island. It is unusual. We've done some research at the firm about parking for an island. Coming up with a lot of information, which, yes, underlines more the necessity for traffic. In that vein, I'm not gonna talk too long. There are a couple others. Environment study, what you heard about the water concerns. Again, I think that would be a standard requirement. And one we haven't really covered is the tree cutting. That, again, is sort of a standard report that is done in the subdivision situation. So traffic, environment, and study, and tree service, what is coming down there? And issue there being none of the trees being lost with the runoff, essentially, into the lake. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else say this? Yes?
Technically, I'm from Chase Island. I just want to give a bit of a referral to the gentleman who said that, you know, parking is not an issue. I, I may be in and out of Pier Nineteen on a daily basis, sometimes twice, yes, in my boat. One of my boats. But the thing that, the thing that I wanted to make everybody clear is I know the parking situation is there probably more than anybody. I'm here for time. It's, it's a mess since the stores closed. Because everyone's parked in the store lot. When the store gets sold, and those people get thrown out of there, where are they gonna go? And I think it's absurd to sell ten lots on an island and have those people staring around trying to figure out where to put their boats, their cars, and their trailers. The lot up the road, the Tuftboro lot, as far as I know, is not a full-time lot for property owners. It's a temporary lot. You'll have to go to the town hall, you're gonna get a little permit. It's cheap, but still, it's temporary. So right at this moment, there is actually no facility or any place for these people to park. And I think if you sell these properties, you need to let them know that they better find a piece of land or a mainland somewhere where they can put their own driveway, because there is no place to park. And as far as I know, there's nobody selling anything at our docks either. So I need to look at that, but I think it really needs to be very carefully looked at.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, Mary Jo Smith, two north Chase Point Road. We're all here tonight because we love the lake, and we all, of course, feel very passionately about the place. This is a very special place. We're gonna... My hope is that this place will always stay special. We just wanted to share a little story with you. It was during the winter, and Bob and I were returning. We were on north Chase Point Road, we were on Chase Point Road near Camp Bell Nav. And on the side of the road, it was a snowy, icy day. There was a parked car. And there was a young man who was holding a small baby by the side of the road. So Bob and I rolled down the window. "Please, sir, can we give you any assistance? Can we give you some help?" And he said, with his little young baby in his arms, he said, "I'm introducing my son to Camp Bell Nav." So I hope you will realize that this is such a special and wonderful place for all of us.
Would anyone else say this? Yes, sir?
Don Porter, ten years old, two of these people are my neighbors. I don't know if that, if we will play the video. Okay. I did bring these pictures. These are pictures that I took from my dog. I'm a director of butter at Camp Bell Nav. I think we're on the same side, just different opinions.
I'll be brief on, really, that's not relevant to the application. And thank you for providing me the opportunity to show you that. That's my view of Camp Bell Nav's use of stewardship of the lake and the traffic and the congestion. All this, I'm on your sideline, I feel your pain, I see. Look at that video, look at the traffic, look at the... There's a hundred kids in that bed. And you saw them, they're all over, they're all over the shore front, on my side and on the island's. If that, if that doesn't scare a loon, I don't know what would. So I, I share all your concerns. And I, from my perspective, I'm a developer, full disclosure, but ten houses is gonna have so much less impact on that lake than the camp on the entire island. It's just, that's just a fact. And so I would rather see that island developed with ten houses than, I've watched them, in that video, we can't see it, but they ship fifty or sixty children out to that island. And they camp up there on platforms. They have no facilities up there, no permits to do it. They just do it. And what impact does that have on the environment? So I just wanted to raise those issues, let people think about it. I've never gone to public care, and I've never complained about any, any buildings or proposals that the camp's had over the years. I think I made a mistake. I think they've created a traffic issue on Chase Point Road. I can't sell the dock, Joey, it's just, it's crazy. And I would trade places with Jim, with you, or anybody else, contest that. I don't think that's right.
Yes, sir?
Joyce Lottner, Chase Point Two. How long has the camp been there? Hundred minutes?
I think so.
And I don't think that, that stuff impacted any loons in previous years. The other thing is, I can't change the point of the lot. And that traffic scenario depicted there was once, began to be. And I don't know what caused it, but it only happened once. So if the implication is that's a continuing event, it's false. Thank you.
Again, I'm Ray Diamond. Cindy and I have developed this island and involved a lot. And with the current rules, the speed limit is seventy miles an hour, we're probably going about fifty-five. But we're doing everything that is exactly the way it should be, the way it ought to be. Now, Camp Bell Nav, how long have they been there? They haven't been on Fire Island in that long. You people bought land, or your grandfather bought land, your father bought land, in a residential zone. Fire Island is a residential zone. What Don Porter is working, looking at is a residential zone. Now, they went ahead and built on Fire Island. They worked ten platforms on an impervious surface. They built in the constraints of the twenty-five feet shoreline protection act, ignored it all. There's two other structures they built on the mainland. They ignored all the laws and continued on. The biggest, best loon nesting area on Fire Island, bombarded with that camp. So ten houses compared to what that camp does with Seth behind it, which I'm telling you, if he gets Seth, if Seth gets Fire Island, he'll be out of Chase. And I'm coining manifest Seth today.
Can we give him a little applause?
I repeat, last.
For your order, Mr. Chairman, Camp Bell Nav does not, that's not in the application process, is my understanding?
That is true.
Okay. Does this starting to feel like an attack on Camp Bell Nav?
Well, I apologize if you feel that way.
For your order, you set the stage, Mr. Chairman.
For your record, I apologize for that, but it is Camp Bell Nav. They're promoting to buy it, and Camp Bell Nav has a PNS on the line, and they're trying to delay my process, our process. And I'm very thankful to Seth. Cindy and I thought of the project, thought that we might have something that was going to be, you know, a good investment. But thanks to Seth, it's now gotten three to four times the attention. And we're getting offers on land double, triple. Thank you, Seth. We don't want to develop the island to reclaim its estate. Cindy and I have very gentle planning down there. Not to exploit it, not to blow it up beyond what we... Probably not ten houses, probably not, you know, not, not... Sadly, any was the original plan. Our original plan was to save the camp and put one house on it. And maybe later on. Cindy has three kids, I have three kids. We, we thought we had enough experience to let them come in. We could have a family compound, if you will. We may have to sell, we, we, we came in with a caveat, we may have to sell one lot, maybe two lots, because it's a big investment for us. But we were never gonna exploit the land. Now, because of Seth, we have to exploit more. And because of this room, you are going to make this a full Ten Mile Development, no question. I'm sorry, but that, that's, it's just math. We now know what we have, we appreciate what we have, and we understand what it's worth. But that was not our contention, so if we can retain this, or they can retain it, stop it. Seth is just trying to hit that timeline. He's trying to delay it, so he blows our contract back. And now, whether we're something back or not, I have somebody back, because it doesn't matter. He can push it back, but it's not gonna matter. We're going forward with Fire Island, and we are very optimistic everything will go well. Thank you.
Glenn Furelli, State Representative from Tuftboro. Mr. Chairman, I don't think we need to make this a personal back and forth, a personal attack. It's been a very civil public hearing, less time than this time up to this point. And I would ask that you gain control of the meeting.
Would anyone else say this?
I'd like to be answered. I don't really want to speak. I got a chat, a chat, she did. And you probably get the camera, hard time seeing this. But the picture of two islands, Chase Island and Fire Island. If you can see Chase Island. Take a quick look at it. It looks like Hurricane Dory, the island's storm, and all the swirls. Thirty-one lots on an island smaller than Fire Island. Fire Island is next to it, right there. Ten beautiful homes. Be the nicest island subdivision on Lake Munus, Saar. If you don't know how lucky you folks we have it, that's what you're looking out for instead of whatever may happen to it if somebody else gets a hold of it. Look at it. There's four hundred and fifty at least house lots on three islands with sharks, and they look like that. Fire Island is beautiful, and it will be beautiful if you let them do what they want to do.
Thank you. Yes? Just to put the face of the name on it, Seth, this sounds like Camp Bell Nav. And just pulling intentions here, I think the request and testimony that Bell Nav has given, our expectations is that the planning board does its job, crosses every T, dots every I. We at Camp Bell Nav have been on our property since nineteen oh seven, and the property has grown over time. None, except for a little parcel of one oh nine, under my jurisdiction, seven years as director. Our hope is that all of us as neighbors can continue to protect our watershed. Our boys, as you saw in those videos, use the lake quite a bit. They swim in it, they kayak, they sail. You've seen it all. And just like many of us, we enjoy that water. We will do our best, as we always have, to protect loon sites. We have the loon preservation society come out to help the islanders. We found a couple of them every year, and we close the island for use, what includes nesting. I was not aware of that potential nesting site until Matt made me aware of it about a month ago, or in that range. And we will be moving our canoe site further away from them before they come on next year. Thank you.
Would anyone else say this? Yes, sir?
Ron Albert, Nineteen Mile Shore. I first want to say to the board, thank you. I know it's tough. You're all volunteers, you put in a lot of hours. Hopefully, other projects are much easier than this, but if not, I say thank you for your service. And I will look at the site, I'm still at the community, it's tough, thank you for what you do. And it is tough. Questions we have, you did a marvelous job, I thought, looking at those different engineering firms. Thank you for that. We haven't spent several decades in the requirement. Where we're never licensed to regulate, presume that even when we action, those professionals are licensed by the state. The state would also have oversight and enforcement complaints. I presume that in your evaluation of those different contractors, that you need inquiry about any sort of complex enforcement actions, reviewing, be able to make sure that this sperm that you want to select is in fact free of, or relatively free from the large forms of the pressing complaints. I presume that is part of the review of who you weren't looking for. About the park, and I too live right near the town parking lot. And I think you caught it on the lucky day that since the store has been closed, more people are there. Also, I think a lot of those cars and trucks you see on the road, if you don't have a town permit, and they're just parked here. So there is enforcement. But also, that lot is small, and it's tough for them to... Their crew, I've seen them, they back boats in and out of very tight spaces. But for the amateurs, it will be launchable occasionally. Certainly around in turnin' around, the boat and the trailer and the truck in that lot is small. Maybe if this development were to go forward, the power requirement there might be to provide enlargement of that space. So that it's easier for these people to park the trains. Shouldn't be a town expense. But maybe more space should be provided. In other subdivisions, there is a law that requires that you have. You can't approve the development if it's on the program or on a class six. So they are, insofar as the larger picture, you know, looking at issues like that. In this case, it is going to be part of the requirement. Negotiate it, create more space. And I just want to reinforce and reiterate too. Several people have suggested the need for additional environmental review, environmental impact study. I want to endorse that. I know a lot of people I've talked to want to see the study. They would love to see the park this way. And mitigation plans. It's important. We've got a lot of issues. And as someone said, what is the tipping point? Ten more homes, at least ten more homes. And visitors coming with their horse to get out to the island. It's initiative, yes, in series. As far as the number of kids swimming in the bay from the camp, I respect Mr. Rep니다's concerns. But the camp's been there since nineteen oh seven. I don't think he bought it in nineteen oh seven. So it shouldn't be a surprise that it's not changed when he bought it. The camp was there. And we see that all the time, right in front of us. I've grown up with that. That doesn't bother me. Got out out there, and a lot of power was, they're pounding back and forth. And that's probably makes it special, precious, that kids, some of whom come from the end of city on scholarships. You know, it's a special experience for the children. And one last point I was concerned about is when I talk to my with the planning board, I ask, how many other issues beyond the surveys, the plot plan, and the set system get adjudicated? Or whether it can be looked at? The answer I got is, well, we're relying on the third party engineer to make a recommendation, if that's necessary at all. I object to that. I think these issues are largely that the planning board needs to step up and require. Because we have the issues with the septic overflow coming down nineteen oh seven. There's a study that's won't be prepared or won't be completed for several months yet. You've got all the export crap, you've got the parking issue, you've got the loss of lot of habitat issue. You have plenty of mission safety. I believe that you have the scope and the margin to change from auto plant to some. My fear is, as a planning board, is that maybe you're like looking through a hollow tube at a document, focusing just on what's easy to approve and disapprove. There's a lot that I worry, certainly the blueprints are correct, yes or no? That's pretty black and white. There shouldn't be a lot of argument. Do the set tests need to be required? Same thing. There's not a lot of ambiguity without a team of black and white. But these other issues are far less tangible, less available to be scrutinized quantifiably, but so important to it. And I think you can't rely on a recommendation from the third party engineer who may not meet his purpose deals and who may in fact be wanting, which is satisfied that we're standardizing it about the next. It need more review. This is the last sizable, undeveloped, unprotected island on the state. And we see there is definitely contention between the camp and the applicant. If I were to King Solomon, what would I do? I would just put it down, remember? Maybe the town should buy the site. Maybe they should go before the town meeting at some point, the water department, who want to buy and preserve and protect the site. I think there was enough public support. We most probably could get the donations, that this could be purchased, set aside as a park as a water park. For the town. There's money there that I think it could be raised. Maybe the township buy the site and preserve it, steward it forever. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Andy Sullivan, this company. I've participated in hundreds and hundreds of subdivisions, residential, whatever. In my experience, tree studies, traffic studies, the primary studies are not the biggest. They're not always there, depending on the context of the subdivision, the size, the scope of everything. I think we should appear that. As the gentleman just said, there are a lot of my pointings here. The criteria of the plan is only the subject systems, inflows, outflows. Those are all objective, okay? And they can be analyzed, and they can be decided upon, and they will be decided upon by the planning board and the third party engineer, whether anything is agreed or not, et cetera. But there are very many other subjective things. But what we're in, we're in an environment to try to minimize what's subjective. Because everybody is subjective, and they have different criteria that are internal and externalized. Try to have it their way, that's not a good way. Or have another way. But that's not what the board can do. That's not what any jurisdictional adjudicator can do. They have to reduce it down to the objective, to be fair. And that's what we're asking, or asking the town, to be fair and to look at the things that can be measured. And not look at the things that cannot be measured in a quantitative sense. And I don't think these various other studies are necessary for this project. I mean, we discussed the park, we discussed possible solutions. Sounds like town enforcement. In terms of variety things of that sort, we've submitted reports above the wildlife, okay? They're new for me. With due respect to the person from the loom society. Everything's potential. We had a comment about two potential nesting spots. One's on the applicant's site. And it's addressed that quite a bit. The town could say, well, we want more addressed, but that's within your purview. But it's a vote for this acknowledgement. It's there, and it doesn't need any other extra cost, extra time. There is a contract. And maybe the town should have bought it, but they didn't step up in a way. But right now, there's a binding contract. We're all up, all in our business, like we deal with contracts. That site is going to be bought by these applicants, one way or the other. It's not going to be bought by the town. Due respect to the YRC, it's not going to be bought by them. It's going to be back bought by where they... They have to go all the way to spring for it. They, well, they don't want to. It's a subdivision, ten plots. Yes, it's a beautiful island, no question about it. Okay? But it's not your island, okay? It is privately followed by the Winchester's. They only, they want some land, they need the land, okay? And a private contract exists. So I ask you to respect what is on the table. It's not a town property. It's not your property. It's a contracted property, and they have the right to buy it. And to buy it and to use it in a manner that the town, law, state allows. And that's what they do. And that was what they presented to the town. And I speak to you, because you're all here and you're all concerned. Quite frankly, there's a line right here, because those are the decision makers, not you. They're the decision makers. And they've been very polite, very accommodating, allow all of us to go on. And that's what the planning board is doing. But when the dust settles, they're going to make the decisions. They're going to make decisions on pretty objective criteria. And hopefully, they'll make decisions relatively quickly too, the one way or the other. They're going to make decisions, and what falls out will be a nice apple. And so I appreciate everybody here. But I just wish that we realized, it's not your property, it's not the town's property, it's a private party. And do what is required of them to pull forward this subdivision.
Can I add here?
But just to clarify, my comments. I wasn't suggesting that we deal with the subjective issue by ourselves with this engineering firm that's expert in plot plan, surveys, etc. Suggest, rarely, find some experts who know these issues. Someone who knows parking, who knows who are fire locations, and knows that. Not to do it yourself. And yes, it is more subjective, but there are experts who might handle that. And we do respect property rights. We do respect property rights. But property rights don't trump everything, you know? Look at what they're doing right there. Whatever happens upstream of that river is going to affect people downstream of the river. And the law protects them too from adverse consequences, what some companies do upstream. So we need to hear that. I need to check that right here. Thank you.
Guy, by one oh seven middle road, I'd like to address Attorney Sullivan publicly. Attorney Sullivan, you have mentioned our master plan. That master plan is due to be updated in two thousand and sixteen. It's now September two thousand and nineteen. We have no updated master plan, so please, don't get your hopes up that this planning board will do anything in any reasonable amount of time. Thank you.
Would anyone else say this? Okay. One of the things raised was the issue of regional impact. And regional impact is something now that we have final plans, the board needs to make a decision on. I just want to read what regional impact is and the criteria, so keep refreshing the board's mind, and also what we folks here. Regional developments of regional impact. The purpose, the purpose of this subdivision is to provide timely notice to potentially affected municipalities concerning proposed developments which are likely to have impacts beyond boundaries of the single municipality. In other words, we'll throw both of our decisions away. Two, provides opportunities for the regional planning commission and potentially affected municipalities to furnish timely input in municipalities having jurisdiction. Three, encourage the municipality having jurisdiction to consider the interests of other potentially affected municipalities. Definition in this subdivision development of regional impact means any proposal for a local land use board which in determination of such local land use board could reasonably expect it, reasonably be expected to impact on a neighboring municipality because of factors such as, but not limited to, the following. Relative size or number of dwelling units, density of existing star, proximity to the borders of the neighboring community, transportation networks, anticipated emissions such as light, noise, smoke, or particles, proximity to aquifers or surface waters which transcend municipal boundaries, shared facilities such as schools and solid waste disposal facilities. The review required, a local land use board has to find RSA six seventy-two dash seven. Upon receipt of an application for development shall be the property to determine whether or not development if approved, reasonably could be construed as having potential for regional impact. Doubt or concern in regional impact shall result in a determination that development has a potential regional impact. In other words, it ties with the regional impact. Each regional planning commission may, with public participation, although the public posted notice, intend to develop guidelines, we've noticed published in U.S. Department of General Circulation in the planning region, develop guidelines to assist the local land use boards in its planning region in their determinations whether or not development has potential regional impact. Regional planning commission may update the guidelines as needed and provide them as a reference by the regional planning commissioners for municipalities in the planning region. There's some procedural, just get that, that's after, that's been deemed in the regional impact. We've been presented with an overwhelming amount of information, both sides, from committees, boards, environmental groups. And we've all taken away that time and go through it and read it. So I ask the board, are there members of the board who want to speak about how they feel that this would be deemed or viewed as a regional impact to the surrounding towns around them? Obviously, we must...
I think it's a difficult thing to be on the board, as he says, faced with a phenomenal amount of information on both sides. I personally think it would be better to refer this to the Lake Street planning commission. Because it is on the lake. And we are now in, in, well, in Old Borough, Cuckoo Borough, it's doing a lot of work, partnership, there's a lot of that going on. As we move forward, personally, I think it would be a better idea to err on the side of more input rather than less. I am sorry that it does take quite a long while. But you don't want to get somewhere and find the other.
Okay. As far as the heavier... I agree that it really needs, well, aside, and have this, have this study done. There's been such a helping from people coming in. I appreciate all you people coming here and voicing your opinions and thoughts of the lake. So I prefer to see, you know, we're not experts at this. All right, this is why we're outside of the engineering review. And I really think we should take this outside also, look the experts ahead, they come back also. And take a visit.
The, as I look at additional review for regional impact, the downside is it is another complication in the process. The upside is it's, it provides for another set of individuals, some of whom have more experience with this sort of stuff than we do, to review it and provide input. I'm sensitive to the delays, but I'm also sensitive to the, to the idea that there may be some things that we don't see as clearly as we might by an audit of the regional planning commission that can give us an additional dimension in the process. And allow us to, as the project is, is brought to, to final approval, including self-conditions that may make a significant difference spectrum in the total project that we have in the vision.
The criteria, Johnson said, is really qualified for regional study. However, with consideration that is unfolded in front of us, I think that would be necessary for us to do that, to make sure we cover a lot of things. And like Kate said, by the air, and talking about more than less. So I'll go along with it.
I think for me, traditionally, a large concern of mine is always that all applications are weighed about the same. Stories, so to speak, and everyone is treated the same. And my reluctance is that in the past, when we've done subdivisions, whether they were ten lots, or fifteen lots, or twenty lots, or sandheads which were large, we have not asked for regional impact. And we felt it was unnecessary. I think the difference with this application is that there's a large amount of information that's presented, whether it be water studies, the loom preservation, things that affect multiple towns in the area of the water stocky. Makes it clear that we should sell this for regional impact.
It makes it clear that we should send this out for regional impact. Can I, yes, I just have a comment.
The regional impact is something that board decides, not because of controversy. Now, we can never go into more of those issues. Controversy is irrelevant. The difference of fact pattern maybe, that's considered, but we had, it is, it's people that have different attitudes and different perspectives. That is absolutely irrelevant to the regional impact decision. And I'm looking at again to the master plan, or the version of the master plan back there. The factors are dealing with how this affects the region, not how it affects the town. And we've talked primarily about how this is affecting the town. And I don't see the regional impact. Yes, it's on the lake, every island has the ability of people boating, swimming, whatever, in the entire lake. But I don't believe that necessitates a regional impact just because I can disembark from one part of the town, one part of a mountain, and boat past another town. That is not a purpose of a regional impact study. How it affects that other municipality. And so I think the criteria the board needs to examine, whether to decide a regional impact, if necessary, is does this subdivision, this ten-lot subdivision, have the ability of affecting another town? Certainly not light, looking at the master plan again, page, uh, what pages was, uh, exhibit E one. You know, where's the nearest town? Well, whatever, we have traffic impact on a regional road network. I just drove off of Bedford today. There's only really one main road up here. It is, but it's, it's it. It's not another ten cars, it's not from Mount Hill Beans and that. So even though it could be perhaps more cars, is it going to impact that traffic, regional network? That's a question.
The public session is still open.
Okay, thanks.
Does that addition have a regional impact? Does the additional perhaps light seems on an island, tough to approach, both sides of this lake? Does that have an additional impact on another town? Uh, et cetera. Go through shared public facilities, the schools, tough to go ahead of the schools, all the ways. Uh, would require evacuation of a large area that any contact, it's ten, it's ten houses. Close enough, something could swim to shore, uh, et cetera. So I think the plan, board, with due respect, controversy is not a criteria you can legitimately consider in making your decision whether a regional impact is, the review is required. What you have to consider is, does this subdivision have the potential to have a regional impact? Not that everybody, a majority of people in this room don't want it, without the saying it should be a critical subdivision out here by somebody. Will those particular studies shed light on a regional impact that you see now, today? Today, do you see a potential regional impact? Not if one of these studies comes up with it.
Let's talk more about the water. Let's talk more about the water, all of the issues that we're facing, and how that can affect. So the concern is that what we can face as far as water quality changes is going to affect and causing any impact with the municipality, whether it's water loss or the surface. And this area is facing water changes right now. So I think it's important because of the proximity of the station, the water directly across the bay, which is probably about two miles away, um, as well as what we may be basing as far as traffic and such. So that we receive it from the other towns for water quality as we do.
Yeah, I think the water quality issues, one is going to be also addressed, which has been a little bit response to the Lake Winkisaki Association, no dear. I read this, I don't quite understand. So I think I need to look at that, understand what ten separate systems do on, on farmland to push this up to sixteen hundred and something percent higher than it already is in the ocean. I would issue that. So I think that that needs to be looked at, um, from the engineering firm to look at that, whether, if that was impact of water, of such, we move to multiple roads, it does impact, so I don't necessarily agree with what you said.
I think that the issue is that we receive so much information about water quality and we haven't received a lot of offset and data, you know, our team. And as we know, water quality has, you know, degrades in an area, especially in an area like this, approximately to another town. You know, it's extremely important to the entire economy, but this, this type of regions, it's just.
The lake is the lake.
And a lot of that, a lot of that we're receiving, you know, the state of the water quality. And some of those qualified, the state of the water quality is, is that risk. So I think it's close enough that it should be made in the region.
Can you speak into the microphone, so we can hear you?
Again, the water quality issue, you know, the water in the lake tends to carry whatever it's got in it outside the boundaries of the town. Uh, and it's, uh, I personally feel qualified to say it would or would not have an impact outside of the, um, the town, top. And by looking at the regional impact, that will give us additional information. And I'll go forward.
I have to agree. I think it would be actually somewhat irresponsible of us not to get as much information from people who may, as you have said, have more experience with dealing with these issues than we need to. Need to be assured, let's become the.
And I think enough information has been presented to raise your question.
Um, there are any issues, Mike, but just as a, just one commentary about the regional major. The town spacing is waiting for a report on the fact that Wolfboro is gray water going through nineteen mile brook, even nineteen mile bay. Even if this weren't normally a consideration in us on our, in bay, on the lake. Since we don't know the results of that in port, and that importance involves Wolfboro to Cup two Borough, and by definition, regarding the multiple basis of inclusion.
You don't understand what we're, is our I B system, why the name is.
It's a ridicule, we don't know how it's affecting nineteen mile bay water quality. And so anything, Ken, if it's, if it's raising the. No, it's different, but it's affecting nineteen mile bay water quality. So anything that further, let's say it's tipping it, and also we don't need to worry about any, any slight addition would play a role. Um, with work.
The board can really look at the application that's.
Of course, my next question, if you consider, well, I'm saying, if Wolfboro is water affecting nineteen mile, it's regional.
We won't know until we see an application. Yes, sir.
So I can speak to this a little bit. What we're proposing with this subdivision, we're not proposing to do any development at this time. And at a time of many of these lots being developed, setting shoreline permit, if and where the permit's needed, not permit, those are all governed by the Michigan E S, we're reviewing and approving, which is part of water quality review. And they have their standards of trees, erosion, how much purges, your town allows twenty percent of purges. I doubt these lots will even get close to that. So the water quality is not be reviewed by state agencies. Like I said, there's four agencies of feeling. Say that for the, I agree with this.
Yes.
Suzanne, I'm the attorney of the nine, for Kent, for Kent. Um, I don't know if anyone else is a member of a regional commission, but I am, so I know what they do. We talked about it briefly last time. Um, they already walk from college and they're there for you in a situation exactly like this. Furthermore, RSA thirty-six fifty-five resides six factors for the board to consider, water quality, and going both the rest, et cetera. Um, and additionally, the statute goes on to say that if it's a close call, if you're not sure whether it affects it or not, you're going to err on the side of it affects it, then it should be turned over to the regional question. Again, they're there to assist, that they're, that's what they're there for. In addition to the fact that the statute toward you, it should be done. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak? All right. Can I have a motion to go to a regional guy, yes or no? I've already made a motion, so are you?
No.
Uh, no. All of us in favor of the, Mr. Regional Man?
Aye.
It has been deemed original. Now, are there any other questions? I'm sorry.
I, I just wanted to say personally to Randy and Cindy, please, that this is personal against you too. You don't know, you have no reason to dislike him. I think he makes great neighbors. We don't like it is the plan to chop this island up into ten different lots. Like you said that, you think it in the family down the road, you want to create space for that. You must know this, if, if, if the board worked to approve the plan, it'd take the upper left current use. As I understand it, within twelve months, you gotta pay ten percent of the value it is now. And until such time as you actually develop, you're gonna have to pay the increased tax on the residential zone. Why? Because of the larger quality, that's how it costs a lot. I should think, this could all be brought to an end, if you just give up a ten-unit plan and buy it and occupy it as it is. And there's no issue. And there's none of the stuff, the stuff, the culture, you, women can form your plans. And then as the children need an extra lot down the line, approach the town at that time and say, oh, there's six kids, two of them want a piece of the island here, so can we get two more lots out of this? The deal is that's, I would suggest it. And please, don't underestimate community opposition to something like this. You might look up a lake winky boss over in there, not very long ago, party borderline, that was undercover. They submitted a plan to the board. And it was fought and opposed, fought and opposed. And with all the newspapers, we saw a demonstration by Mr. Sullivan. They took it to the end, and so finally, the applicant was financially and emotionally exhausted, dropped the plan. And they were out all that money. Consider that. The community here made an offer, you know, a wild act, reiterate it. If you would have dropped that plan, we could probably bring mercy to what you spent thus far. That might even define someone, if you would have dropped that town for planning and occupying it yourself. You just don't want to see the island chopped up. And for a lot of good reasons. End of discussion.
Would anyone else like to speak? Yes, sir.
In answer to the question, does this project have an impact on the town? I would have to say, yes, it does. We are the town. And it looks like we're in the majority here. Yeah, I think it has a big impact on the town. That's it.
Would anyone else like to speak? Since we have this application, we have to go up for third-party review. Since this application will have to go up for third-party review, and since it will also have to go and have the wheels of regional impact start turning, and because the planning board has been remiss and not taken care of other applications while we deal with this one, we are going to continue this, I have a motion to do it to a date certain of October third, which would be not too late, too late after that, so that we can take care of some other planning board business and allow time for the third-party review with the engineering firm, as well as the regional impact to begin. Can I have a motion to continue the application to a date certain of October third?
So.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Does anyone have any questions about procedural matters for the planning board?
Yes. Let me reiterate what I said, how much more can the bay take? The bay has taken a hit from the contamination VOCs as a result of back to thousands flying. Though contaminants are still soiled, they're in the bedrock. They will be there probably forever. I, uh, I lost my D-quell, and my D-quell is being tested four times a year. The values have not changed, most contaminants still there. Wolfboro had a problem with their, uh, R I B breakout. Subsequently, they took the designers' court, Wolfboro prevailed, and now they have a collision up there. There's another impact on the bay. I have not in the past five years seen such aquatic growth, starting from the pier at Fire Island all the way down through to nineteen mile brook. An unbasic species, but there are weeds that have never, ever been there since five years ago. That is an indication that something's going on here that we don't know. And our study hopefully will reveal some of the issues that are affecting the bay. I haven't been able to find crawfish along the stony shores. When I used to be a child, I was able to sell crawfish on the side of the road. They aren't there anymore. I don't see the stools with hatchlings around. Hornbait would combine clouds of three feet diameter. That didn't happen this year. So I would like to press upon the planning board to let us finish the study through the ethnologists, the U N H, and the L W A, to see if there is something that can be done to mitigate the issues that are creeping up on us slowly, slowly. Thank you.
So reading was intended, but does anybody have any questions about procedure or general planning board questions before we adjourn? All right. Can I have a motion to adjourn? All those in favor?
Aye.